Good evening and welcome to the September four, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Bird.
Present.
Vreeman.
Present.
Raymond. Corbin.
Here.
Sol.
Present.
Rowan.
Present.
Shay.
Here.
Schulteis.
Present.
And Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years. First with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Shay, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.
Almighty Creator, send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Shay. Next item on our agenda are our Consent Agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine, and they have been reviewed by council as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the Consent Agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before we ask that, Brenda, would you please review the Consent Agenda for us?
Yes. For A, excuse the absence of Councilmember Raymond. For B, approve the minutes of the August twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting. For C, receive the claim filed against the city. For D, for transportation services, award the bid and approve the budget for the Maple Avenue and Thirty-Second Street Improvement Project. For E, Community and Neighborhood Services, schedule a public hearing for the CDBG Program Two Thousand and Twenty-three, Twenty-four Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. For F, from Finance, declare Transportation Department items as surplus. For G, Public Safety Services, renewal of joint forensic lab agreement with Ottawa County. For H, Public Safety Services, accept the MCOS Public Safety Academy Assistance Program Grant. For I, a revocable license agreement for nine-nine-nine Blue Bell Drive driveway improvement. For J, a revocable license agreement for nine-eight-five Blue Bell Drive driveway improvement. For K, schedule a public hearing of necessity for the downtown principal shopping district assessment for September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four. For L, schedule a public hearing of necessity for the downtown parking operations and maintenance assess assessment for September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four. And for M, schedule a public hearing of necessity for the downtown snowmelt operation and maintenance assessment for September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four.
Great, thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the Consent Agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from Consent and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the Consent Agenda?
Moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Vreeman is their support.
Support.
Support by Bird, any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Bird.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol. Yes. Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
And Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Public Comment. Under the Rules of the Open Meetings Act of the State of Michigan, we allow the public the opportunity to be able to speak directly to council during all of our regular meetings, our study sessions, and frankly, you have the ability to speak at any one of our public board committee or commission meetings. We do have guidelines that we ask you to follow. Each person may speak just one time. You may speak on any subject that you like to, but you are limited to five minutes. And there are three lights on the dais in front of me, a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we are strict about that. We also do like to make sure that you know that this is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to be able to address council on any issue that you think is important, but we don't engage in discussion or answer direct questions during this time. But it's possible that if there's a question that arises, staff may be able to circle back and answer that question for you. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and the municipality that you live in, so that we know whether you're a resident of the City of Holland or not. Now, with that being said, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Martha Capastani, Holland, and want to start out by thanking you for your service. A couple of weeks ago, I shared some important information, and the tech was not working, so I want to share that information again tonight. So, last time I had prepared an exposé of research going into greater detail of the dangers of transgender and queer ideologies that push for medical intervention. But by coincidence or divine design, I came across the American College of Pediatrician's Statement on Gender, which exposes organizations which were once considered leaders in gender medicine and as of now have been discredited. I will share their statement now. They say, "We have serious concerns about the physical and mental health effects of the current protocols promoted for the care of children and adolescents in the United States who express discomfort with their biological sex." This declaration was authored by the American College of Pediatricians, but it was really developed from the expertise of hundreds of doctors, researchers, and other healthcare workers and leaders who for years have been sounding the alarm on the harmful protocols that continue to be promoted by the medical organizations in the United States. Despite recent revelations from the leaked WPATH files and the recent release of the final report from the CAS review, these medical organizations have not changed their course. So we are calling on these medical organizations of the United States, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Pediatric Endocrine Society, the American Medical Association, the American Psychological Association, and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, to follow the science and their European colleagues and immediately stop the promotion of social affirmation, puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and surgeries for children and adolescents who experience distress over their biological sex. In our declaration, we affirm that sex is a dimorphic innate trait defined in relation to an organism's biological role in reproduction, male and female. This genetic signature is present in every nucleated somatic cell in the body and is not altered by drugs or surgical interventions. Consideration of these innate differences is critical to the practice of good medicine and to the development of sound policy for children and adults alike. Medical decision-making should be based upon an individual's biological sex. It should respect the biological reality and the dignity of the person by compassionately addressing the whole person. We are here to defy the claims made by these medical organizations in the U.S. that those of us who are concerned are a minority and that their protocols are consensus. They are not consensus, and we are speaking in a loud and unified voice. I'll now share my own remarks. As more and more exposure of this dangerous pathway reaches the public, the masses will no longer be afraid to speak out about what we are doing to our children. We've known all along, and now it's being exposed all over the world, that this is not a safe and viable life choice, especially for children, and we should stop promoting this as such in our schools, libraries, and public events. When you think about it, what kind of person would tell a child, based on a cursory observation, that they may be born in the wrong body? What kind of person promotes confusion, fear, and dangerous unproven medical interventions to children? What kind of person thinks that public displays like drag and indecent exposure at pride parades are appropriate for children? What kind of persons wants men in women's sports, locker rooms, and prisons? And I believe that none of you in this room think that that's a good idea for Holland or anywhere else. However, there are activists pushing this agenda everywhere, including those that may not be from Holland who come here to promote these ideologies, especially during Pride Month. They can be loud, disruptive, and in many cases violent. So far, not violent in Holland, but it may be a matter of time. The local media portrays that Holland is a hateful place because people want to protect children from hypersexual public displays, inappropriate sexual literature in our libraries and in our school curriculums. What do we have to do as a community to come together on this? We are heading in the wrong direction. Who decided that we're supposed to move away for protecting children and their innocence? We have worked long and hard for years and decades to put safeguards in place to protect children, and women for that matter, and now it seems that this activism is trying to tear it down in the name of acceptance or inclusion. It's all smoke and mirrors with an evil agenda behind it. It's about the money, the exploitation of children, and people's own insecurity about their life choices. All children deserve to have their innocence protected from this dangerous cult-like ideology, and that includes children at risk, children with autism, children in foster care who are more vulnerable, and even children raised in same-sex marriages. There are many in that community right now that don't want their children pulled into this dangerous and destructive movement either. Thank you for listening, and I hope we can make a change for good and ensure the safety of our children in Holland regarding this deceptive and dangerous ideology. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name's Elizabeth Peterson. I live in the city of Alleghen, four-one-one River Street. My name's Elizabeth Peterson. I am running for Circuit Court Judge in Alleghen County. I have been a lifelong resident of West Michigan, born and raised, and a longtime resident of Alleghen County. I grew up in West Michigan, playing on the lake shore with my family, boating, enjoying many of the parks that we have here in Ottawa County, in Kent County, and in Alleghen County. My family actually, with regards to our ties to Alleghen County, dates back to nineteen-twenty s when my great-grandfather, Barney Peterson, was a teacher in a one-room schoolhouse that eventually became known as Moline Christian, which recently celebrated one hundred years of serving students. Growing up in West Michigan, as many of you here are serving the community, I grew up learning to serve others, and in doing that, found in my profession as a prosecutor, the ability to advocate for victims who don't have a voice, being children, adults, or whatever other member of the community. And in doing that for the last fourteen years, I've learned the importance of having a judge on the bench who values what the public has to say, what victims have to say, and what defendants have to say. And so when the legislature added a third judicial seat to Alleghen County, I decided to throw my hat in the ring and run for Circuit Court Judge, because I knew that I had the heart and the education and the common sense to make decisions from the bench that benefit not only victims, but the community at large. And so that is why I am running for Circuit Court, and I'm looking for your vote November fifth. My service over the last fourteen years, working alongside law enforcement, has earned me the endorsements of many current and former law enforcement, including Alleghen County's Sheriff, Sheriff Baker, as well as both current Circuit Court Judges, because they have worked with me, whether they were a judge on the bench or Judge Antkovek when he was a defense attorney, and knows that I will listen to both sides and make a fair decision based on the facts in front of me. And so in serving our community, I've continued to value what other people have to say, and so I solicit your questions, if you have any questions, or feel free to reach out to me. But I look forward to serving Alleghen County from the bench and ensuring that Alleghen County remains a safe place to raise a family, to grow, to live, and to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Hunnerson-Zeland. Counsel, I hope you've had time to review the documents I emailed you. I'm requesting you commit to updating the Collin Park ban shell policy by providing a designated city department to sponsor, co-sponsor, all people groups listed in your anti-discrimination ordinance. I want to specifically mention the religious organizations who have been denied the use of the ban shell for fifty-one years. Presently, any religious group is relegated to using the grass in front of the stage. We hope that will change by your due diligence. I'm aware that Celebrate Recovery was sponsored a few weeks ago. Central Wesleyan had worship. How did they get sponsored when others can't? Inconsistent. The policy reads the Collin Park ban shell is available only for city-sponsored or city-co-sponsored events. The actual process is the clerk approves the application. She always denies the use if there is not a city sponsor. She offers no department available to sponsor or any way to get sponsored. She does not suggest the next step. Most people give up. We have to note to contact Parks and Recreation. His email is pleasant and friendly, and he usually says, "The application to use the ban shell is denied because of policy. You may have your religious event in the grass area." At the present, a local band is requesting the ban shell for a worship bilingual concert, Shine Your Light in Holland, September twenty-first. They've been denied the ban shell. This policy clashes with the Holland's Anti-Discrimination Ordinance, Chapter twenty-five-nine, which says not to be read to prohibit or interfere with a person or a religious organization's free exercise and expression of religion, as protected by the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and Article One, Section Four of the Michigan Constitution. Sent in our article, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Holland's Non-Discrimination Ordinance already protects religious organizations' ability to exercise their beliefs. The attorney was asked to address concern of Holland's Non-Discrimination Ordinance could lead to targeting of faith-based organizations for their beliefs. Councilmembers sought Attorney Vanderveen's legal guidance after hearing the group's concern. "I certainly don't want to have any gap which somehow impacts someone's First Amendment rights," said Councilmember Scott Corbett in the April thirteenth meeting. "I want to make sure that we're protecting all freedoms and all groups, including religious freedoms." Attorney Vanderveen gave a presentation made for saying religious groups already have an exemption for religious conduct built into the wording that protects any conduct lawfully protected by the Holland City Charter. Following the attorney's presentation, Mayor Nathan Box said he felt satisfied that city's current ordinance sufficiently protects religious freedoms. Quote, "There were some questions raised about whether the ordinance provided full protection to everyone in the community. It's very clear that it does, and we thought it was important to let the community know that there is not any discrimination against the religious community that's created by the ordinance," Box said. Continued, he said, "As a matter of fact, one of the things we do here in City Council at the beginning of every meeting is openly pray at the beginning of the meeting. People's ability to express their religious beliefs is embraced in this community. We are looking for your cooperation, council, to annul, revoke, amend, revise, and/or update the nineteen-seventy-one Collin Park ban shell policy. The City of Holland, please provide sponsorship for religious events. As Mayor Box said, people's ability to express their religious beliefs is embraced in this community. Please make sure you save the date for September twenty-first to attend Shine Your Light in Holland bilingual worship, Collin Park ban shell, four o'clock to seven. Bring chairs and your family. Thank you."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda this evening, unfinished business, traffic change to add a handicap parking space with van accessibility and relocate a handicap parking space in Lot Seven-C downtown, and I would be looking for a motion from a council member to remove this from the table.
So moved.
Moved by Vreeman is their support.
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 By Sol, thank you. Thank you, Belinda. Support by Sol, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item is off the table, Mr. Van Beek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Brian, hey, Brian, you want to come up, kind of up here? Brian is our Transportation Services Director, and he can go through, I think this is a relatively straightforward recommendation that we have. I'll do that, hit the button on the side, and then that'll save Steve from turning it on here in a moment, too. There you go. Thanks, Brian.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Good evening, Mayor Box, council members, staff members, and members of the public. Item before you tonight is being brought by the Traffic Committee. It does involve a change to parking in Lot Seven-C. This is right in between the Holland Public Safety Building and the businesses along the west side of Eighth Street, between Seventh and Eighth. So that lot currently has an existing handicap parking space, and I'm going to see if that's shown here, yeah, where the red X is currently, and what we're proposing here is basically moving that handicap parking space over a couple of spaces, creating a hatched-out area where there's a step up to the sidewalk area that affronts the buildings, and then adding a second ADA spot. So the net basically here is to hatch out that parking space next to the stairways and then add an ADA parking space. So it was brought to us by the DDA, and I believe there's a couple of businesses in the area that brought this item to the DDA for consideration. So that's what's before you tonight. As we do with all the parking changes, this came to you at the last meeting, it was tabled, notices were sent out to the area businesses. We have not received any comments from the Transportation Department. I don't believe the city clerk's office has received any comments as well, so that's the item there before you tonight.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I just have one, Brian. You said there were steps there by the hatched-out area, or is that a ramp there by the hatched-out area?
Yeah, so there are steps there by the hatched-out area. So what this will do, and again, not directly related to the ADA, but there's been issues in the past with vehicles parking too close to those steps that render those steps not usable by anyone. And so what we're doing here is just, one, creating the ADA spaces, but then also making those steps accessible for everyone.
Okay, is there wheelchair access from there? I mean, I've been back in that parking lot, but I've never really looked.
Yep, yep, so you have to go around the parking lot and just to the public sidewalk along Seventh Street to get into the building. So there's a great change there between that elevated sidewalk along the buildings, and that, you don't get rid of that until you get out to that public walk on Seventh.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? What is the pleasure of council in regard to this matter?
Motion approved, M eight A.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Second.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Vreeman.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
And Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the opportunity for the public to address us in person at our meetings, we do also have an email address that you can use to send emails to all City Council members. Those are reviewed by council in between our regular meetings, and then if we have any, they're accepted into the record at those regular meetings. We don't read them out loud, but we do accept them into the record, and that email address that you can reach all of council is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on the agenda, item ten A, and I'm guessing ten A and ten B probably, Mr. Van Beek, you're going to be looking to, oh, no, these are different. Okay, let's just do ten A. Text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, Mr. Van Beek.
I think I see Steve there, he is. Hi, Steve Peterson, our senior planner is here tonight, and staff has continued to be at work, I think in a very good way, in that we are using the Udo document. And as we use it, we find things that we can continue to improve on it and make more clear. So Steve is going to walk through the items that they brought to the Planning Commission for conversation and recommendation, and the Planning Commission has now made these recommendations on to you. So thanks, Steve, for using the document and continuing to try to make it better.
Thank you, thank you, Keith. Good evening, everybody. Yes, we do have a few amendments here. I know I brought the whole book up, don't worry, we're not going to go through the whole document. But just try to get through some of these changes, as Keith has mentioned, that has been recommended from the Planning Commission, so just to kind of get started. Section four point oh-two here on our recycle centers, it's a use permitted in the industrial zone. We would like to expand that use a little bit and add some language to include or other materials as determined by the approving authority, so that we're not limited to just that list that is in Udo. That was something that, again, as Keith has pointed out, as we're using it, as we were exploring the recycle center idea, you know, and wanting to have some other materials besides just what was on that list, so again, just trying to expand the materials that would be eligible to recycle center. Section nine oh-nine-C is our infill section over there under building setbacks, if you can see that strikeout. We want to take out the front yard language, so that the building setbacks would apply for all of the different yards, not just for front yards, so we want that to apply. We want the building setbacks to apply for all of our different yards, not just the front Twelve oh-seven, Planning Commission Application Types under condominiums, again, just what I guess I call the redirect, thirty-nine dash twelve oh-seven D-two instead of the E, so just wanting to point you to the right spot. All right, this is where it starts to get a little more interesting, so bear with me, I put a lot on this screen here. Our open space zoning district, it's our only zoning district that doesn't have a process chart, so that's what you see down in the bottom right, is the proposed process chart to tell somebody, you know, what process they're going to go through if they want to do something. I put the process chart in that upper right-hand of the NMU and CMU and RMU zoning districts, so you could kind of see what we already have. That's what we have for all the other zoning districts. In our open space zoning districts, we allow for some private development, it's not just for parks, there's some private development there, and you can see over on that left side, under two point one-eight-B, these standards apply only to private property adjacent to residential zone districts. So there's where it lists out our setbacks in those circumstances, but if we had a piece of property that was eligible to do something, and I'm going to pick on the Paw Paw Cemetery, a private cemetery in the OS zoning district, right now, we wouldn't be able to tell them what process they would go through if they wanted to do a small building or an addition. So we simply want to add that chart in there, so that somebody would know what they can do. We're using the thousand-square-foot threshold, that is sort of a common number that we use elsewhere in the code, and again, in that chart that I provided already in that NMU, you kind of see that thousand square feet already, so just trying to be consistent with what we've done elsewhere, with both those thresholds and the chart. I know that was a long explanation for just adding that chart, but hopefully that makes sense. So speaking of private cemeteries, the change that you see on this screen is just adding the asterisk. So if you are familiar with Udo, you know we have what we call the P-stars and S-stars. That signifies that there are some design standards that come along with that particular use. So again, here, private cemeteries, following that column of the open space, the OS zoning district, you see it has a P. We want to add the star to add some standards, so again, if Private Cemetery wanted to do some sort of an addition, a new building, we would be able to, we'd have some standards to tell them what they would expect. So that is what we would like to add in four point oh-two-A-A, so that would be where you connect to the P-star. So this is our regulations for those private cemeteries, essentially requiring that they So this is our regulations for those private cemeteries, um, essentially requiring that they meet the, the state law, uh, that they don't have exterior storage of materials, uh, they meet the setback requirements of the zone district, a 10-foot setback for any kind of burial, and that, uh, they meet the residential buffering requirements if they're next to a, a residential, uh, zone district. Again, just pointing you to, uh, those residential zone districts that are already in the code, and all of the options that are available with all of those residential buffering requirements. So those would be the standards we would put in the document for the private cemetery. Deferred parking. So this was something that the Planning Commission kicked around a little bit. We already have in the ordinance in Udo, uh, waivers and reductions for parking. So deferred parking is kind of another idea, so rather than reducing the amount of parking, uh, this would simply allow somebody to not build it right away, so, uh, and these are the standards that would come along with that. So we would put those regulations in 5.08, then we would, since we also have some parking, uh, uh, language in 9.02, we would simply use that spot to point you back to 5.08. These would be the standards, though, for deferred parking, where if somebody could demonstrate to the approving authority, either admin approval or possibly Planning Commission, that the parking requirements were a bit excessive, um, and if they could lay out their site plan to show us where they could actually put all of the required parking, that required parking couldn't, even if they weren't gonna build it, they couldn't use it for required landscaping or storage or stormwater purposes, so that if it needed to go in at a later point, either because the applicant wanted to put it in, or because the city, uh, through other reasons, was gonna tell them that they needed to put in that deferred parking, that it could go in right away. So again, the idea would be, this would be a, a tool that would be available. If somebody didn't necessarily want to put all of the parking in right away, we would have this, uh, uh, available on our books that we don't have today. Gazebos, pergolas, picnic shelters. So this is something that we wanted to, uh, put in the document that we thought would, would clarify, um, um, you know, what you could do. So this is intended to capture, and, and actually Tricia put together a nice handout, give her credit for this, um, that we would, that, so people could understand that if they did something like the gazebo or pergola, we would have some standards for that, uh, require a permit, may, have some setbacks, but that it wasn't going to count towards their number of accessory structures. So if you had your couple buildings on your property, you'd still be able to have a shed. This is intended to be for those that, as you see kind of in the graphics, that are used for, you know, your outdoor, uh, picnic table or something on your deck. Um, now, I guess if somebody started to store materials in there, they started to park their car under one of these, you know, that would certainly be, uh, fall into a different section of our code. So, uh, we, we were trying to make this clear, uh, to explain to folks that you would be able to do these other things in addition to the other accessory structures that you're already allowed to have. So again, this was intended to, to help clarify, uh, what is allowed out there. I think the pictures actually help maybe even more than the, than the language. So subdivisions. So bear with me here, I don't know if I did a great job of explaining this at the Planning Commission, um, but let me try, let me try to get through this. Again, trying to clarify this document, the way you read it right now, in all zoning districts, a site condominium, a traditional condominium, you are required to go to the Planning Commission for approval. We want to tweak some of that language, um, and that's kind of what you see in that, in that red box in the upper right, um, and change that language to the, use the zoning district to establish the review process. If the zone district does not establish that process, the Planning Commission, um, would be the approving authority. So again, this is intended to capture, um, if you're going to do some sort of project that is already identified in Udo, that you maybe go to admin approval, um, and maybe you're gonna do, um, maybe you're gonna condominiumize that at a later date. We're not going to require you to go to the Planning Commission for, uh, that condominium. I put an example of actually an industrial project on that lower right-hand side of the screen, uh, so that is a project that would have gone through the admin approval. And then each of those little units, they condominiumize that, so that they could sell those. We don't want to require that person to come back through and go to the Planning Commission because they did a condominium. So hopefully that, hopefully that makes sense to you guys.
So, so what you're saying is they don't, we're eliminating a second review process by the Planning Commission for a project that's already been approved and reviewed. The only change is that the ownership status is now gonna be condominium versus one owner of the entire project.
Right, right, and we're kind of, and we want to use existing Udo if we already tell somebody how their project was gonna go through the system. We want to use that and not, not use the, the condominium process just because they wanted to form the, the condo portion. So in addition to that, you can see we have several strikeouts there, public outreach workshop. I want to emphasize that we think those are very helpful and important, but as highlighted, um, in the middle of that page below, you can see what we actually require for the public outreach. Don't include condominiums, site condominiums, or a subdivision plant. So simply want to ta, take that language out, and the way I explained it to the Planning Commission, we'd either have to take the language out, or we'd have to amend that highlighted section and put subdivisions in there. So now, it's completely possible that you might do a PUD, that's a site condominium, and so you would still have to go through that public outreach, but we didn't want to have that trigger be just the, the condominium process, uh, alone. I hope I did a decent job of that.
And I, I, go ahead, Mr. Vreeman.
I just wanna make sure that I'm getting this right. So the example that you have on the bottom right of that screen, uh, if the developer puts two homes and gets approval for everything that he's thinking on the site, and then, did I hear you say later he wants to do condominiums? Is it already been approved at some point in the process?
Yeah, so the-
Whether he does it or not?
Yeah, so the example that I used, and I, and I guess I tried to use that intentionally, because we see this quite a bit with our, especially commercial and industrial, where, um, we've already approved a project, they've built it, and they, they might decide to, um, condominiumize the building, in this case, this small industrial building, so that they could sell each of those units after the fact, so that they wouldn't have to go back through another process, simply because they wanted to change the form of ownership. They've already gone through the zoning approval process.
So, I, and Steve, this comes up at my law practice all the time, that people tend to think that a condominium is a type of construction, that they think of a traditional residential condominium where the buildings are either attached to one another, um, but, but what we need to understand from a legal perspective is that co, a condominium is a form of ownership or a form of subdividing a piece of property that could be residential, could be industrial, could be commercial. And so you could have, uh, a large industrial building that has, say, a bunch of garage doors on one side, and each one of those is an individual business, and the property owner owns all of that, that entire building with all of those individual sections and rents them out, but at some point says, you know what, I don't wanna be a landlord anymore. I wanna sell each one of these individual parts of the building as a separate condominium. That's a form of ownership rather than a style of construction. And I think what we're, what you're getting at here is, hey, if, if Planning Commission has already approved this commercial condominium with all of these different garage doors on the one building, as a single owner project, and comes back and says, you know what, I've decided to change the ownership of this, but the design is gonna be exactly the same, the use is gonna be exactly the same, that we don't wanna have to have them go, go back through this, the review process all over again, simply because they changed the form of ownership rather than the design or the use of the project itself, right?
That's, that's absolutely right.
So we, so we have a number of commercial properties we've done this for. My mic is on.
Yeah.
Oh, lean in?
Yeah, I can't even hear you right here.
So we've done, we've authorized, um, if you will, some commercial buildings already to be kind of subdivided thus, this way, correct? But it's under one ownership. I mean, we've done some tax exemptions for a number of facilities like that. Is that correct? So could those then, I mean, I guess I'd be addressing that back more to Keith. We've done this for a couple, quite a few commercial properties already who have manufacturing, and we got out through Lake Shore Advantage, coming in here, we give them tax exemption, because they've broken out their buildings for tenants, if you will. So what I'm saying is, is those properties would be, what you're talking about would be eligible without coming back to the Planning Commission for, for approval under this, these, these guidelines.
So I think you're mixing two different things, but I'm gonna look for global help here. In that situation, you're still looking at a situation where the ownership of the building is still one owner, and then you have the subdivided, are renting that facility, but then the tax status of what they're paying for, um, equipment within that facility, because businesses pay taxes that we as resident, residents don't do. So in that situation, no, I, I don't equate that to being the same thing, because there, you still have one old owner of the, of the building.
But to the mayor's example, is it could then be changed?
The, what we're, what, what this changes is talking about not changing the use of that particular piece of property or the design of the building, but simply changing the form of ownership. So for instance, I, I own a, I own and live in a condominium that is completely on the second floor of a building. And I often describe a condo, it's a cube of air, and that cube of air can be either attached to the ground, and it could include the exterior walls, you know, all the way in, it could include from the exterior surface of the interior paint in. It's simply how you define that cube of air as to what you own. And what they're, what the suggestion from the Planning Commission is, is, hey, if somebody's already come to us with a, with a plan that, for a project that has been approved, the entire plan has been proved, and initially they were thinking about, that, that had multiple units, and initially they were thinking of renting each of those units, but then changes their mind and says, the units are gonna stay exactly the same size and shape that they were before. The use is gonna be exactly the same size and shape, but I'm not gonna rent those units anymore, I'm gonna sell each one of them individually. That we don't wanna have to make them go back through that approval process, again, simply because the form of ownership has changed.
Right, I'm agreeing to that. I'm just giving examples to buildings we've done that already with, gave tax exemption. I know the tax exemption issue is separate from the ownership issue. I'm just saying, to that example, if that owner came back to us and said, I want a condo, a site, a condo development out of this structure, separate ownership of the, the different parts of the building, they could do that by automatically coming to the Planning Commission without, or not Planning Commission, you're saying-
They're not gonna come to the Planning Commission if nothing else changes, they're not adding something, they're not changing anything.
They could just change the ownership of those separately.
And, and they might have to do something differently with the tax abatements, but that's not a question that's before us right now.
That's not the question I'm asking. That's not what I'm asking, I'm just using those as facilities that we did that with as examples to what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, there, there are all kinds of examples of multi-use buildings in the city, whether they're rented or condominiums, ones that you wouldn't even expect there.
And this is only applying to our commercial and industrial, correct?
Yeah, that's where we see it quite commonly, yep.
Okay.
Yep, and again, so we're you, we're putting that language in there kind of strategically. If we already have a process that defines how you would get your project approved, you're just gonna use that.
Got it.
Yeah, does, does not change anybody's ability to be able to use a pro, a property in a different way. So I think I, I think what you're getting at is somebody, this isn't gonna allow someone to turn a single-family home into a multi-unit home without having to go through an approval process. Yeah, but he, well, but even if they were, this would not, they would have to have that multi-unit building, residential building, approved through Planning Commission already, and it would have to meet all of the other zoning requirements. This is just saying, if the form of ownership changes, not the number of units, not the kind of units, the form of ownership changes, we're not gonna make them go through the same review process on design.
Thank you for-
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Rowan.
So, no, I'm clarifying, but, um, you said only for commercial, and is that correct? This applies only-
So that's where we're seeing it quite often, the commercial industrial, where we have these examples where it went through some other approval process. It, it would, it would be across the board. If we had a process that would identify what you wanted to do already in Udo, you're simply going to follow that process. If you did want to put in, I guess what I'm gonna call a traditional residential site condominium, you're gonna have to go through the Planning Commission, but not necessarily because it's a, it's a condominium, because that's the way, you know, the number of units and what else gets triggered through Udo. So, yeah, we are trying to really remove the form of ownership as being the trigger.
Gotcha.
Does that-
Yeah, I think, I follow you.
We simply want to use what's already in Udo to define how you get through the process, not because it's a site condominium.
Right, and you're saying that that is, like you said, traditionally seen in a commercial use or a commercial aspect, not in a residential. There are other reasons you'd have to revisit the Planning Commission-
Right.
Were it a residential-
We just see these examples, uh, quite a bit in the commercial industrial where we wouldn't, you know, where I just thought those were good examples where, where we simply wouldn't wanna take somebody back through.
Yep.
There would be nothing really to even look at, right? I mean, we'd just be-
Yeah, I understand. Thank you very much, I appreciate the clarification.
I hope, I hope that was helpful, sorry.
No, that's good. Any other questions?
I, I don't know, maybe not.
No, I don't think so.
About the same.
As, as the only one here, other than you, that was at the Planning Commission, I would say no. We had the same level of discussion at Planning Commission to make sure we understood it.
So just a couple more, sorry. So again, s, just on that same topic, but in our condominium application review process there, you see it on the right side of your column. We're simply adding another little box that's gonna point you back to that process, so, just again, so if you're looking under the condominium review process, you're gonna see that, and it's gonna point you back to that, um, our process review tables that we were just talking about. We do a lot of that in Udo, pointing you back and forth, right? Um, just a couple more. Modification to the Board of Appeals' application deadline, so 21 days. It gets a little bit difficult to meet the public noticing requirements and get it to the paper in time. Uh, Board of Appeals is 21 days, so, uh, we simply want to change that to 28 days. Again, being consistent with how we do the Planning Commission, um, changing that from 21 to 28. 21 just gets really tight, and if somebody's just gone for that day that it needed to get to the paper, uh, you know, we don't wanna miss a deadline, so we just wanna back up that application deadline to 28. Same as the Planning Commission. Finally, last one. Um, so under our approving authorities, we were, we were messing with this to sort of update the Board of Appeals again for, um, some of their membership, and while we were doing that, we thought, well, you know, we should, we should point them to their bylaws, you know, 'cause there's some other rules and regulations that we would want people to be aware of. And so we put that language in there, and we thought, well, I guess if we're gonna do this, all of the other groups that are mentioned there, Planning Commission, Historic District Commission, Downtown Development Authority, we simply wanted to add that same sort of language to point you to the bylaws, so that the reader, if they wanted to find out more about those groups, they would know to look there as well. Those are all of the changes in Udo. That is what Planning Commission has recommended. We did not get any public feedback for our, um, public process at Planning Commission either, just a lot of back and forth amongst the members, um, but this is what's been recommended to you for approval.
Yep, great. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions for Steve? Yeah, Mr. Schultes.
Uh, Steve, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness in the Planning Commission to, uh, address user friendliness of Udo. Helps people navigate, uh, the process better, so well done on that. I do have a question about the addition of section L to 906 for gazebos, pergolas, and picnic shelters. So this is a new section, if I understand it correctly.
Yes.
What's the, what's the need for a new section and standards associated with it?
Yeah, so again, I guess I put it in that sort of, uh, helpfulness of the document to be able to, you know, tell people, so it's clear that they would know that, you know, yes, in addition to your shed or other accessory building that you're allowed to have, if you want to have, you know, a small picnic shelter, that you would be permitted to have that. So again, trying to make that language clear, so people understand that you can have those things in addition to, that we're not gonna count it as one of your, uh, accessory buildings, so-
Okay, thanks, maybe I misunderstood it initially. Okay, thanks, maybe I misunderstood it initially. Without this language, what would be the process for adding a pergola to your property?
Yeah, I, I think without the language, it's been, you know, you have to do it through interpretation and, and you know, maybe it's just not clear all the time. So we thought rather than, you know, have to do that individually for each person, you know, let's put it into the code so people understand what's allowed and, and maybe what's not. But by putting it in there, I think it makes the document a little more user friendly.
Yeah, I appreciate the perspective, I'm, I'm going a little bit differently in my thought process that it adds barriers for a homeowner to add it on, without additional permissions needed, if that makes sense. So that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around, is if it didn't necessarily require a permit previously because of, it was open to interpretation, that now maybe this is a new standard that homeowners might react differently to because now they have to go through the permitting process to do it instead of adding one themselves.
Yeah, yeah, that's a fair, that's a fair comment. And again, maybe the reason why I thought I flipped it over to the graphic, you know, because if you were gonna do just the little fabric tent, then that's, that's nothing, we're not even talking about those. So we are talking about these structures with, you know, a real roof, you know, that are a little bit more substantial than just those, you know, putting that tent in your backyard and so that, that we would want to check those, so. But to your point, I guess that is an added requirement to get a permit for some of those things. And we require a permit now.
Yeah, Steve, yeah, I was gonna say the designer of your chart is standing behind you, so she might have something to add for, add.
So right now, we do require a permit for all gazebos, pergolas, all of that stuff. What we ran into in the complaints we got into our office were that each residential property is only allowed to have two detached structures. So if you have a detached garage and you have a detached shed and you wanna add a pergola, you can't. So we thought people should be allowed to have those in addition to their storage buildings 'cause they're really for outdoor recreation and outdoor family use, they're not for storage. So they serve a completely different purpose. So we felt by adding in the regulations, it allowed for more flexibility where they could have those structures, but we wouldn't have to count them toward the number of detached accessory buildings. Does that help?
Yeah, that helps, it changes, right? So if, if it was currently permit required and accounted for more strictly, then I appreciate the flexibility. Thank you.
Great, any, any other questions for staff? Mr. Byrd.
Yes, what's the cost for the permit for that?
Thirty-five dollars.
Any other questions? Mr. Corbin?
Not related to this, just after we, into this issue, I just have a question for the Planning Commission after this.
Any, any other questions? Otherwise, I'm gonna back to you then, Mr. Corbin.
What?
You said you have a question, question for Planning Commission.
Oh yeah, so, excuse me. No, just because things are changing rapidly in the battery technology industry. There's a lot of risk factors associated with battery technology across the board. Bicycles, hand tools, gardening tools, lawn mowers, all those things. Are we even exploring the possibility of, you know, talking about that in zoning at all?
We have not been. No, we have not.
Although through the Fire Marshal and the Fire Code.
Yeah.
We, we adopt those international codes, so as those codes change, and they always are, not only based upon what you name Scott, but other things, then we adopt those by reference also.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Great, thanks Steve, appreciate it. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item 10A?
Motion to approve 10A as presented.
Moved by Schultes, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Corbin. Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schultes?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item, item 10B, text amendment to Section 29-38, joint building sewers. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Tricia, hi. Why don't you introduce yourself also for everybody, as you've already been up here, everyone knows you, but.
I don't, there's a couple of people that I have not had the opportunity to work with very often. My name is Tricia Drier. I'm in the Community and Neighborhood Services Department on the third floor. I'm the Assistant Department Director and I've been around for a couple of years. Sewers, yay, sewers. So again, we try to make the regulations a little bit more user friendly as much as we can while still maintaining a firm grasp on protecting environmental health, safety, public health and the citizens and visitors to the City of Holland. So the, the Holland Board of Public Works, we, my department works closely with those folks whenever there's new construction or repairs to existing infrastructure. So for this particular ordinance amendment, we saw the need to tweak the language a little bit to allow joint sewers for some commercial construction projects. So sometimes we have a municipal sewer line that's in a bad location underneath of a busy street or it's just not feasible to have multiple building connections to the sewer line. Or it would just make more sense to connect some buildings together and then run two buildings together with one lateral to the sewer main. I like pictures, which is why I created the gazebo chart for Steve. So this is an example of shoreline flats. So this project actually came to the Board of Appeals so they could get a variance to connect two of those apartment buildings to one sewer lateral that goes down to the main. The majority of the buildings, they were able to connect independently, but they had a couple of buildings due to the construction site layout that they wanted to put those buildings together and then run down to one main. The property is owned by one owner. There, if there's ever a nuisance issue, they're going to the landlord. So the Board of Public Works and my department looked at the site construction, the size of the utility main in the public right-of-way, the size of the proposed piping. It made a determination to support their application, they came to the board, they got approval. We, this new ordinance amendment would just allow my department and the Board of Public Works to have some flexibility to allow these joint sewers where we deem that they're appropriate and necessary and skip the Board of Appeals step. So that's one example. I think I have one other example. This one was a sewer line break behind the Wooden Shoe Restaurant. Taproom happened when they were building the seven, Seven Brew and Take Five, right, Seven Brew and Take Five oil change. Sewer line broke, there was a lot of scrambling, emergency repairs. This is the tap room, the antique store, and there's a small appliance repair shop in the back. And due to the location of the public sewer line, it was not possible to make another tap. I believe it was under the water table, it's a forced main, it's like 15 feet below ground. So again, the Holland Board of Public Works and our plumbing inspector worked together to review the application and the plans. They had to go to the Board of Appeals, they had to get a special approval just to connect these two, these two buildings to one sewer line. And in the, in the appliance repair shop, I believe there's like one bathroom. So the proposed language would allow the City of Holland and the Board of Public Works to approve joint sewers between multiple buildings under certain circumstances. The buildings have to be on the same parcel of land, they have to be under common ownership. We're gonna look at the uses in the building, we're gonna look at the size of the material and we're gonna use those factors to make our decision. If at any point in the future the buildings are separated, if they're sold to different owners, if the property is divided, then they gotta split. We don't want nuisance, nobody wants nuisance sewer issues where your neighbor's backing up your line and it's causing damage to your building. So in those situations, we would still require separation like we do today.
Questions for staff? I, this seems incredibly reasonable to me, why in the world, why wouldn't we do this? I mean, what's the, what's the negative to doing this, negative implications of this?
I think it's really a, so the ordinance, this ordinance has been on the books for a while. And I think it was originally tailored more towards residential. So when a lot of the residential housing was developed, particularly in the downtown area in the early 1900s, it was very common to have multiple dwelling units on a single sewer line because there were not multiple sewer lines available when those houses were built. So whenever the Transportation Department and the Board of Public Works do a public infrastructure project, we often run into multiple houses on the same sewer line. So we have them separated. And I don't think it was until some of our recent commercial construction where we're getting more buildings, we're getting more apartment units on a single parcels, that this was like, well, this doesn't make sense. We should be able to hook multiple buildings. Tiara has a project in, to the Planning Department at the moment where they wanna build a small rec center on the Tiara property, and same thing, they wanna connect that building that has one or two bathrooms to their sewer, main sewer line that runs out to the street. And without this ordinance, they would have to spend a lot of money to run private sewer infrastructure just to connect that one building independently. So I think it's just the evolution of construction. And we still wanna protect the private, single-family homes and we still will require those to be separated. But on some of the bigger commercial projects, it would just make more sense to connect the buildings to one line.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Corbin.
Hopefully be a little bit more articulate with this question than I were with my last two, but. So you had mentioned if they do separate ownership, what's that look like? What, what is, what does, what requirements are we putting in place? They then have to physically put separate lines in then, at that point in time? And how would we enforce that, what's the process?
So whenever someone wants to divide their property, they fill out a lot division or combination application with the assessor's office. My department, usually me, also has to sign off on that application. So we do a file review before we approve the parcel split. So we check for setbacks of the buildings, we check to make sure that the property line, the property size meets the Udo requirements for street frontage, lot size. There's a variety of regulations that we check. So if we found at that time that there was a joint sewer between buildings, we would require them to separate that sewer before we approve the parcel split.
Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item 10B?
Move to approve the joint building sewer proposal.
Moved by Freeman, is there support? Support by Rowan, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schultes?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, item 12, Echo 6.1, the gifts. Brenda, would you please review the gifts for us?
Okay, the City Manager's Office has pleased to report the following gift. A $500 donation from Big Lake Brewing for the Holland Energy Fund. It is recommended this donation be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to the donor.
Great, thank you very much, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve said gift with a token of our appreciation.
Moved by Sol, is there support? Support by Freeman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item 13, communications from the City Manager. Mr. Van Beek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I do have a handful of things, but I'll prob, I promise I'll be fast. First, to build upon the gifts, thought it would be fun to just share a picture and I think it was a couple, it was a couple Saturdays ago, I was able to go out and make sure that none of our firefighters or our police officers pulled a hammy running around the bases. That was the first commandment that I gave, commandment I gave. But had a beautiful morning, fantastic event to be with, just seeing all of our officers and firefighters, men and women and families just having a good time on a Saturday morning. But most importantly, as you can see, talk about gifts, a gift of over $7,600 from this fourth annual event. Uh, this time for Holland Public Schools and they actually, they have an athletic hardship fund which basically covers equipment and physicals for students at Holland Public Schools that may otherwise not be able to participate in athletics. So just a fantastic win-win all the way around and I wanted to make sure to highlight that. And figured it was a good way to show that gifts don't always come in. But quite often, a lot of us rally around and we give gifts back out to the community, which I think says a lot about our people. Next week, no study session, there will be a contingent of us going to the MML convention. So I've been sharing information to that. Belinda, make sure you don't scoot out tonight, I have some information to share with you, okay? All right. Next Monday, however, though, is the start of our, we're hoping to be inaugural Ambassador Academy. Uh, 10 weeks, Monday nights, 6 o'clock to 8:30. My guess is nights that maybe the mayor or I are talking and it might go to 9:00 or 9:15. But a fantastic opportunity to just systematically go through the various departments. Do that in a tour fashion also, where the people that applied for and are part of the Ambassador Academy can learn more about details about our city operations. And yes, hopefully the name gives it away a little bit where they learn more and they can also be ambassadors out to other people, that when people have questions about city and why we do things and how we do things and that they can have good information to share with friends and neighbors. So we're looking forward to that. I know that Mallory had sent around to all of you opportunities for signing up to come to different nights so that offer continues to stand for those of you that haven't gotten to that yet. Um, and then finally, I think we're 95% of the way there, so I feel comfortable announcing this. We have been looking for a good time beyond the construction on 32nd Street wrapping up and the parking lot being completed and Waverly Fire Station having an opportunity for the community come out and see that as an open house. So mark it on your calendars, Tuesday, October 29. We're thinking, starting at 5:30 and probably same thing going to 8 o'clock, maybe, something like that, but we probably won't kick anyone out if, if they're still touring at 8:15. But mark that night, hopefully all of you can make it also. And we still do have on the list for council one of our study session nights going, going in the DeGraff Nature Center van and taking a look at a lot of the different projects that staff have been working on, largely thanks to that guy over there, Matt. So a lot of things going on out there. I think we have all had the discussion where maybe our meetings have been shorter recently, but that does not indicate the amount of things that have been going on in the busyness of staff. Really delivering on a lot of things that you all approved in past months and years. So with that, that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Uh, item 14, appointments and communications from the mayor. Uh, I just have a couple of things. Last Monday was Labor Day and great opportunity for the Labor Day Truck Parade, absolutely spectacular day. Hundreds and hundreds of people downtown. Dozens of trucks, I think their number is well north of 100. Uh, best-looking trucks you'll ever see. People very, very proud of the work that they do. We have a lot of hardworking people in this community. Oftentimes Holland is thought of as a tourist community where that's the major thing that we do. But we are a community that makes things and it is clear on Labor Day when you come down for that truck parade to see all of the businesses, large and small, that help support the Holland-Zeland area. Had an opportunity to be able to speak in conjunction with Kevin Kleinstreit. Had an opportunity to be able to speak in conjunction with Kevin Kleinsta, the mayor of Zeland, to show folks the wonderful collaboration that happens between units of government in this area, which is, I think, one of the keys to success in Western Michigan, is that we do work together to make this the best community possible, because it's not just about the City of Holland, it's not just about the City of Zeland, it's about all of us and all of the surrounding townships, as well as what makes it work well for us. As Labor Day has passed, things are starting to ramp up, lots of activities going on. We will not be here next week, but, so I'll say it now, International Festival takes place in a week and a half. We will have special visitors from the Netherlands. I had the opportunity to be able to visit the Netherlands last fall, and meet representatives from the city of Ason in the northern part of the Netherlands. Their mayor, Mayor Ute, is coming here for the International Festival, so he will be here on Friday, and here on Saturday, and we will be rededicating the fountain in Collin Park on Saturday afternoon. International Festival continues to grow every day, I've been hearing ads on the radio for it. It's going to be an absolutely spectacular event, and we have people who travel from all over the state to come to see Holland for the International Festival, and all of the different cultures and traditions that there are in this community, and I think it's a great opportunity for all of us. So I invite everyone to come down to the International Festival, not this weekend, but the weekend following. So, and that's all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, appointments, motions, communications from council members, anything from council members this evening? Mr. Byrd?
I just wanted to make one correction regarding what you said. You said we were going to rededicate the fountain, it will be the statue.
You are, thank you so much, yes. And now that you said that, I've got to say why. Because the artist for the statue that's in Collin Park, the immigrant statue, is from Ason in the Netherlands, and the twin of that statue is in Ason in the Netherlands. I got a chance to see it last fall, and it is in what they call a holiday park, which is a campground, and it is the oddest thing in the world, and it's for sale. So if anybody wants their own personal version of the immigrant statue, you can purchase that in Ason and put it in your yard or something. But thank you, Quincy, for that, I appreciate that. Anyone else want to correct the mayor this evening? All right, seeing none, there's, nope, seeing none, there's just one more motion I would entertain.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Freeman, is there support? Support by Sol, all those in favor say aye. Aye, we are adjourned, thank you all, have a wonderful evening.